Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And I would say to you, tonight absolutely qualifies for the description of substantive deliberations. We will bring you some big topics. And I'll run through the agenda for you real quickly, and then we'll get rolling. We're going to do, obviously, the outlet mall opens up on Thursday. And so Frida Burns and Lori Crouch are going to jump up and give a presentation to you, just five or 10 minutes, just to let you know, and really let the community know, the things that are happening and going on. It's really exciting. A lot of our staff has obviously been out there the last few days, and apparently it's looking really, really nice. After that, Darryl Critman is going to jump up and give a piece on the Nighthawks program that several of you attended this weekend and know got started. And also introduce Deirdre Love. She is the founder and executive director of Teens with a Purpose. And I think it was Winter that shared a video with me of the Safe Creative Community space that Deirdre is working on. So we've got to get her in front of council and the community to see what you're doing, because it is really something special, and so excited that she is here. And then John Konak and I are going to do a presentation on the cooperation agreement between the city and the housing authority that were, as a copy at each of your places. We'll talk about it tonight in the city agreement about what we'll do, what we're calling sort of the St. Paul's Newton Creek area, but the public housing projects of Calvert and Young and Tidewater. And that'll be a substantive conversation. So I'll actually do most of that presentation, but John Konak and Susan Berry will help me with that. Mike Goldsmith, as you all know, stepped in as the deputy city manager of public safety, and we immediately put him in charge of trying to fix payroll and the problems that we had with, that he inherited with payroll rollout. And so that's obviously gone on for a number of months, and really want you to have a sense of where we are, what we think happened, what we do to keep it from happening again, and give you a chance to hear that piece. And then Jared Chalk and Greg Patrick are going to jump up and tell you about the hotel and conference center project. Jared's going to talk to you about really what's going on these first 45, 60 days, and I think some really exciting news. And then Greg is going to walk you through what are just about the final numbers. So we've got a couple of things to close out of the punch list, but as a practical matter, we know what the final points are and want you and the community to know what those numbers are. And then the city attorney's got a close session for you. So with that said, you know, one of the things we try to do is really highlight some of the folks that are doing great work in the organization and put the folks that are the experts at what's happening in front of council and the community. With that in mind, Frida Burns is our right-of-way administrator, and one of the things we're going to talk to you some more about is, you know, we've opened, we will have opened three major, you know, transformational projects this year. The main Hotel and Conference Center, Waterside, and now the outlet malls. And I've got to tell you, you've got some folks that have really, really worked hard to make that happen. And we'll talk later about how we recognize some of those folks. But the main thing we want you to hear tonight from Frida and from Lori Crouch, communications director, is kind of what's happened the next couple of days, because it's pretty exciting what's going to happen starting Thursday and through the weekend of some shopping and entertainment. So with that said, I'm going to ask Lori to step up.
Wow, Lori, is it time, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Graves.
I just want to ask, just before we get started, because we have a lot to cover, and you're going to talk about employees and our great employees and whatnot. We've got a holiday coming up on July the 3rd, and Councilwoman Johnson, I think she kind of polled everybody last week, and said she can't be here. I wanted to try to get this out of the way. Everybody kind of knows me as the day-off girl. So I want to make sure that we, want to ask if we can give July 3rd, since it falls on a Monday, off to our city employees as well as the fourth. That way they can enjoy two days off instead of just one. So if that works.
Ms. Graves, I've had that conversation with the manager, and I have been instructed the manager to make that announcement at the appropriate time.
Good deal.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry to steal your thunder.
That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am pleased to bring you up to speed and share with you the updates for the plans for the grand opening of the Norfolk Premium Outlets that will take place on Thursday, this Thursday, the 29th. At your spot, you have a map and a parking pass that will get you onto the property. I've reserved some parking spaces for you adjacent to the ribbon-cutting ceremony, but you'll see where they have the breakfast reception, which will start at 8:30 in the morning and go until 9:30, and that's at Market Hall. And then there'll be a short walk from there to the ribbon-cutting ceremony. Do I have to click? Am I clicking? Oh. There we go. All right. So at 8:30, 9:30, opening breakfast reception, then at 9:40, the ribbon-cutting will begin. They have a National Anthem presentation of colors. There will be three speakers, Scott Richardson, Mayor Alexander, and Steve Yaloff, who is the executive, Chief Executive Officer for Simon Premium Outlets. They will cut the ribbon and then take photos afterwards. And then the outlet mall opens at 10 o'clock. And they have a weekend, Thursday and Friday, of a lot of exciting events planned to really celebrate this new outlet mall and the new park and the water that is around it. So I'm going to now turn it over to Frida Burns and Richard, who have been working really hard with Simon and its team to get us ready and ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I am Rick Fortner. I'm your building official, if you haven't met me before. And I'm very proud to be here tonight and announce that one short year ago today, we issued the first two building permits for the premium outlet malls on June 22nd. And just a little bit over a year later, tomorrow morning, they'll be coming in to get their approval for occupancy for the mall and 51 stores. To give you a little bit of where we are now, we've issued a total of 234 plan reviews we've conducted. We've issued 400 permits to date, and we've conducted a total of 1,270 inspections, and they're counting as well. So between now and November of next year, we're expecting another 28 tenants, one restaurant and the rest retail. So, thank you.
So we've been working with Simon and their contractor, Cleveland Construction, since May of last year. And here's a list of the stores that's included in your packet. There's a list of the six stores that we do know that are coming in the fall there. We've been working with them, having monthly meetings with city staff, going through whatever questions or concerns they had, and exchanged phone calls and smaller meetings throughout the year. Here's a quick map of the outlets and the different stores. We've been meeting to coordinate traffic and logistics for this weekend. Cooperation from Simon Allied, which is a consultant that they hired, City of Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Virginia State Police. And we've met several times and also emailed and phone conference to have everything ready for this weekend. And that picture was from yesterday's final meeting. Here's an overview of the outlets. New Road Premium Outlets Boulevard starts at North Hampton and runs all the way up to the outlets when you come in.
Free orient folks, so North Hampton at the bottom.
This is North Hampton here, and Premium Outlets Boulevard is the white line that you see going all the way up to the outlets. There's also Pritchett Street, which is near the firearm shooting range.
Two women that went with the laser.
I don't think it'll work. So you've got North Hampton Boulevard, the Premium Outlet Boulevard, you've got Norfolk Academy down here, 264, excuse me, 64, going across here.
And Miller Store.
Miller Store.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the parking plan, interior parking plan, they've hired 18 flaggers to work inside. It's going to be sort of for opening weekend, it's going to be like when you go to Busch Gardens, and they're just going to scoot everybody in except for the VIP parking spaces. There is some overflow parking. They work with Blackhawk Building. They have parking there. They are going to also use the overflow area for the golf course. And Virginia Westland, the president of Virginia Westland is behind this project, and he, even though there's a soccer tournament on campus, he dedicated 200 spaces for tenants to park. There's just more of the plan where the overflow will be, and then there's the tenant parking there. This is the traffic plan. We're going to have four Virginia State Police officers on the interstate, 10 Norfolk Police officers, and four Virginia Beach Police officers. There will be message signs throughout. From what I'm told, Virginia VDOT, we applied for a permit, and we now have approval.
Arby Lane, just got the phone, Arby Lane. He is going to handle the signage, and it will be VDOT-issued signs. So VDOT will erect all of the signage on 264, 64. So it won't be any signs that will be generated by Simon or the city. It will be VDOT controlling the message as relates to expect delays, expect traffic. So Secretary Lane has just approved that he will handle the signage.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So we're back on schedule and back on plan. There will be message boards in sitting to direct persons, and this is an outlook on staffing, the number of officers. It's going to be 16 hours a day, 15 hours a day. Virginia Beach will staff the areas that are in Virginia Beach. State troopers will assist, and there's also a plan for EMS. And here are a few photos. There was one photo that showed an outlook when you first drive in on Premium Outlets Boulevard. I took that off. You've got to see it for yourself. It is spectacular.
I created terrific.
So Mr. Smigal has a question.
Yeah, I just want to say, I've said this in meetings, but I did want to say publicly, because Frida has never presented in front of us, she's a rock star. Anybody who's ever worked with Frida, she responds back instantly if you send a question. I told you that I've nominated her for employee of the year if nobody has for that. But Frida, thank you for everything that you do for the city. She's just an outstanding employee. Every interaction I've ever had with her has been nothing but positive, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
I would second. The issue about Frida being a rock star is not our decision. It's actually from the citizens. We hear regularly from citizens saying, wow. We get the answers from them. And we have a great team, but Frida really has been somebody that has stood out.
And she deals great with our most difficult citizens as well.
For which we all think.
So really, you all stole my thunder. It is, you've got some folks that have really worked hard these last few months to make some major projects come out. I wasn't expecting you to grasp all the details of that traffic plan. I just wanted you to see the complexity of it, see the cooperation that's going on with the city of Virginia Beach, and Rick and his team, and Frida and her team, and a lot of folks have done some heavy lifting. And this is an exciting weekend, and let the sales taxes start rolling. All right. Thank you all. With that, I'm going to ask Darryl Critman, the director of Recreation Parks and Open Space, to step up, as I said. Just give you a couple of minutes on the Nighthawks program, it's gotten off to a good start, and then he'll introduce Deirdre Love.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager Smith. As you know, our opening weekend kicked off last weekend with the Norfolk Nighthawk basketball program. We had 191 participants, and what we're really pleased about, out of 191, we actually had 40 women that showed up. And that's been a plus for us, because last year, when we had 4% of our overall participation numbers were women, and that equated to maybe about 10 women during the whole session. We had 40 during the first opening session. So that is great. And I think it's due to the vendors we had, and not only that, there are a lot more different types of programs, events happening. We have mixed dance and fitness classes. Our vendors are going to be Centura College. We've even actually had Tidewater Tech show up as a volunteer vendor as well. And there are introductory classes, the welding, electrician classes, and mechanic classes. So I think what we're offering in this opening phase is drawing a lot more of a diverse crowd and a lot more program offerings. This weekend, we'll continue with Berkeley, Norview, and Huntersville, and we have future events happening at the Lambridge Point Community Center and at the East Ocean View Recreation Center.
Yes, sir? You had a question?
No, no, it was not. Sorry.
Okay. Any questions for Darryl?
Great work.
All right, thank you, John. Good job.
Team approach. It's my pleasure today to introduce a very special lady. Since 2010, she's had a wonderful partnership with the city, a working partnership. And how I first met Deirdre was when I got here back in 2006, we realized that we had a deficiency in programming, that all of our summer camps were aged 6 through 12. So we're looking at a partnership with somebody that could provide teen programming. Deirdre stepped up to the plate in 2010. She offered three teen summer camps for us, did an outstanding job. And I mean, her programs, people are raving about them all the time, and we've had such good turnout with teens coming out that we are able to actually get her to lease space in the Vivian C. Mason Technology Center. And that's turned out to be our standalone teen center, and it's done, she's done a fabulous job there. Not only teen summer camps, she does the Hampton Roads Youth Poet Laureate Program, Teens with a Purpose here, this school-based poetry and literacy program, and she's done so much more. But her latest endeavor is actually Safe Creative Space. And what she wanted to really look at was providing a neighborhood with space for art, entertainment, and actually, culture. And this came out of the vision of not only Deirdre, but one of her teen participants, and I'm not going to steal the councilman's thunder, I'm going to let Deirdre do that during her presentation, but actually, through their vision, it turned out to be a worthwhile project where everybody will enjoy. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to executive director of Teens with a Purpose,
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Alexander, city council members, and city manager Smith. Thank you for allowing me to present to you today. I wanted to start with a one-minute video, and the video, I hope, will put you in the mind of what it feels like to be young, open to everything, and excited about a simple garden.
This is a Drama B production.
Takes us back to the first time we dug in the earth at Vivian C. Mason.
70?
16. No, 8. We had engineers and police officers, and of course, the young people danced and celebrated, and anything that grew was a reason to dance and party again. We have one bed, one raised bed, that meant the world to us. So just incorporating art into growing the garden and community. And we thought we had everything that summer. Yes, it was beautiful. So the slides are really a picture documentary of the process, so they're going to line up perfectly with what I have to say to you today. But my job as Teens with a Purpose director is to listen, engage, and support young people, to create a culture that cultivates leadership, strengthens literacy, artistic abilities, inspire young people to find their voice, and encourage them in their civic and social responsibilities. So in 2013, when the teens became excited about a simple raised bed made out of one parking island at Vivian C. Mason Teen Center, our headquarters, I knew we had something. And that something grew into a project that we came up with called How's It Growing? And How's It Growing takes the garden and uses it as a metaphor for life. So we have three components. It's weed, water, and watch. And with the weed piece, we'd actually weed in the garden and talk about what things in a young person's life do they need to weed out? Who needs to go? With water, what do you need to grow? We watch the garden grow, but what are you trying to grow inside of your own personal life and your space? And with watch, we really talked about just being present, just being present in the moment, where you are, what situations are happening in your life, and realizing that the situation does not define you, is something that you'll go through. And so with the weed, water, watch, and the garden, that was the very beginning. And so fast-forwarding to today, we now have 16 raised beds. How's It Growing is a part of every camp, and our teens go out on Monday nights knocking on the doors in the surrounding community with something that they invented called the Hello Brigade. They share food from the garden, invite communities to events that we host, and just say hello, because the community said to us in one of our think tanks that one thing that they needed was to be valued for just who they are, not changed necessarily, just valued. So the teens decided, we're going to just go say hello with, no intentions except to value people. In fact, their Hello Brigade was covered by WAVI-TV 10 as part of their Taking Back Communities. I was proud of them for that. These young people have hosted community block parties with food, community beautification, transformative art, and entertainment at Calvert and Young's Terrace, plus a community festival called Fuse Festival. All of these we offer in partnership with the city. And we partner for Martin Luther King Day and many other community events just to empower and uplift our community. Our community think tank brings people together to work to solve our problems together. So Teens with a Purpose has organically moved from teens-only focus to teen-led, youth-inspired organization involving an intergenerational audience and programs that helps to transform the entire community. This project, the Safe Creative Space, continues, I believe, to support the city's vision for safer, healthy, inclusive communities by engaging community in dialogue with, and hands-on experience in building, in building and in gardening, and in creating programs for themselves and with others with more experience, perhaps, inside of the Safe Creative Space. The plans for the space thus far include TWP's How's It Growing program during the summer with, of course, teens and volunteers from throughout the community, working the garden at the teen center as well as in the Safe Creative Space, the Community Planting and Gardening Day. We have the first one plant for Thursday this week from 1 to 2. And the first community, that's a planting day during the camp from 1 to 2. And then on Thursday, July 27th, from 5 to 8, we'll have a community gardening and game night. And we should, we plan to complete Phase 1 right in time for our community festival, Fuse Fest, on September 3rd. We'll have ongoing building that will take place throughout the summer, and then the next major bill, thanks to the mission continue, is planned for Veterans Day on November 10. TWP didn't do any of this alone. We did it together with our community and various other groups that influenced this process and led us to this day when we are finally ready and able to start this urban garden and a safe creative space. I'd like to just take a minute to thank some of the people and organizations that made this day possible. Thank you, Councilwoman Paul Riddick, for always believing and encouraging us, and for listening to Malik Jordan. He is that teenager from Young Terrace who shared his desire to activate that open lot. Thank you, Winter, for taking the time to get to know our young people and to attend our programs and see our work with your own eyes firsthand, and for believing that we were finally ready with the right partners in the right time with the right experience. He recommended that we move forward, so we thank the council and we thank you. Thank you, Darryl Critminton, for the years of support, and David Freeman, and Keeping Norfolk Beautiful, for, they provided us with training about a year ago, and it was with that training that we really stepped into the community and started cleaning the space, and now it's routine for us, and we've adopted a lot because of that. So we'd like to thank them as well. And I'd like to thank Bill and Joanna Fowler. They are two retired Norfolk citizens who are celebrated mathematicians and chemists who humbly help us in the garden and with our cleaning community project. On the planned dates and any day we find them helping us in the community, and they're here today. So thank you, Bill and Joanna, for that. Brother Marvin Muhammad, who escorts the teens on the Hello Brigade every Monday night. Chief Boone and the Norfolk Police Department, I know you saw pictures of them, they engage our young people, and we're building relationships and caring for our community together. The Botanical Gardens, Virginia Tech, Chris Epps, Norfolk redevelopment and Housing for getting the word out to all of the tenants in the surrounding community and for welcoming the project. For Eastern Virginia Medical School students who are going to volunteer with us to create programs in that space. The Virginia Women's Veterans Summit, who helped sponsor the first planning day, which was June 22nd, when we started the, you know, the venture and built two raised beds. And I know I have left out lots of names and organization, but in the interest of time, I thank them all that I didn't mention, but there is one organization in particular that I have to mention, and that is The Mission Continues. And The Mission Continues is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to bringing together veterans and innovative community organizations to create transformational change for communities in need all across the country. They operate in cities throughout the nation, deploying veteran volunteers alongside nonprofit partners and community leaders to solve some of the most challenging issues facing our communities. I'm going to get to their pictures. There they are. The Mission Continues has been a great blessing to Teens with a Purpose. They partner with us now for a year, and they've done a lot inside of this space at Vivian C. Mason with us, and now really, it's because of The Mission Continues' donation of manpower, expertise, and financial resources that this project is possible. I would like to acknowledge Renee Foster. She is the city impact manager for Hampton Roads for The Mission Continues. Renee, would you just stand so they could see you? With that, I want to get to our last picture. That was Malik. He was at the beginning, and he looked like a baby then. And that's a picture of our core team. And I want you to see the space. And so we're kind of a diagram of what we hope to create. We're starting with Phase 1, and it will be eight raised beds, some performance and education space, and some art and a little seating. And as I said, we're going to start activating this space immediately. So I thank you all for allowing me to address you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Mayor, you hear me talk about being a collaborative, connected, creative community, and I've got to tell you, if there's a better example, I don't know what it is. And that last slide, frankly, is what grabbed our attention. If you think about going from that one bed to the smaller than this table to a vision that looks like that in a mission like this, it just felt like you all in the community needed to see that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Riddick?
Deirdre paid tribute to a lot of people who were involved in that, but I think we need to recognize her efforts as far as this is concerned. This facility started out in the embryonic stages. It's the old local 1248 I.L.A. Union Hall. A friend of mine, who was on that board when the I.L.A. moved out to Princess Anne Road, said, Paul, why don't you get the city to buy that building? And so we were fortunate enough, I think behind Regina Williams, we paid $300,000, you know, for the property. And it started off as an after-school tutoring facility. And then Teens with a Purpose came along. And let me tell you something, that facility is worth much, much more than the dollar amount that we paid for it based on what it has done. And Deirdre, I just want to thank you so much for your efforts. As you mentioned, Winter, he started maybe a year ago, a year and a half ago. Malik, the young man that she mentioned, said to me, said, why does Norfolk have an arts district on the other side of St. Paul Boulevard and nothing? arts district on the other side of St. Paul Boulevard and nothing on my side of town?" And so, Winter rolled his sleeves up and with the effort of Marcus Jones and during his management period, and created this. And it's up to us as a council now to take it to the next level. The children that come in from public housing communities in the surrounding area, and it certainly gives them a sense of worth. And if you've never been to one of their poetry events, they had one down at the Rofa Theater. And these youngsters are great and skilled in terms of the spoken word and poetry. And I thank this council here for supporting them in our budgetary efforts and deliberations. And I just hope that we continue to do that because it does give us another, something to be proud of as a council. And so I'm gonna thank all of you members of council who now know about it, you know, you've seen it probably as a budgetary item in the past, you didn't question it, you supported it. And so I said, "Let's just continue and take it to the next level." Okay? Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Gray.
I agree with everything you said, Mr. Riddick, and I just want to say to Deidra, you know, it is evident, and somebody had to have the vision, and you did that. And then it's evident when you see the children and the young people, your love for them and your patience with them, and y'all are everywhere. I mean, we show up to programs, and Teens With A Purpose is, they're on the program, they're presenting their gifts and their talents, and they're giving back in so many different ways. So thank you for your vision, and thank you for not giving up, and thank you for what you pour into the life, because all of this came because you had a vision. So thank you for what you do, and thank you for what you pour into the lives of these young people every single day. It is extraordinary.
It is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manager.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna actually take the next piece myself, along with John Koenack from the Housing Authority, and we're gonna talk about a cooperation agreement that's at your place that is obviously related to the Housing Authority but involves what we're right now calling Newton Creek and St. Paul's Quadrant, and we'll talk some more about that name. But I asked John, I know some of your commissioners are here, so I think it'd be good to recognize them.
Good afternoon. Very happy to have our Chair, Barbara Han Lee, Vice Chair, Don Masaccio, Board Member, Dick Gresham, and Board Member, Michael Burnett, right here today.
Thank you, John. As I said, I'm really gonna provide a framework for a discussion that I think will take place going forward, and the document that's at your places would actually come before you for a vote on July 18th. In your 2018 budget, it's $14 million that goes into effect on July 1st in the CIP over the next five years for the demolition and disposition of Tidewater Gardens, Young Terrace, and Calvert Square. And we feel like it's important that the city and the Housing Authority be very clear on what each of our roles are. It's obviously a draft at this point in time, but want to again start to frame that conversation. Your priorities of education, housing, and public safety, you know, we talked a lot at the retreat about how we look at these things through the lens of resilience, and all the decisions that we'll make are really about being a resilient community. We know that where people live and how they live impacts their educational experience, and it impacts their safety in their neighborhoods. I would tell you that many people hear the word resilience and they think how we respond to sea level rise. And in fact, sea level rise, in fact, resilience is key to all that we do. It's about how prepared our community is in the event of an incident, and it's about how our citizens in our neighborhoods handle daily strife. In 2015, council approved the Norfolk Plan to Reduce Poverty. With 22% of our residents living in neighborhoods of concentrated poverty, a holistic and comprehensive strategy is needed. Shortly thereafter, Norfolk released its Resilience Strategy with an eye towards designing the coastal community of the future and living with water. It aims to build resilience in a holistic way by also focusing on deconcentrating poverty and growing economic opportunity. But a lot is already happening and is already underway, and we're putting that under the heading of growing opportunity. And we will continue to grow the infrastructure we've put in place to provide opportunity for our residents. This effort will continue the work of the Poverty Commission in the Resilience Office to create better housing opportunities, better educational opportunities, and better job opportunities, better supportive services. Programs like Norfolk Works, Bank On, We Feed Norfolk, The Pathway to Prosperity, Job Fair, Quality Early Education Programs will all be key to our work in Newton's Creek and citywide. But one of the themes I want you to hear today is this must be more than a redevelopment project. We will also put in place additional infrastructure, the pilot program to strengthen neighborhoods, a response team that works with neighborhoods to address issues that may result in changing neighborhoods, a strong network of supportive wraparound services and policies to ensure that we don't re-concentrate poverty in already fragile submarkets. This initiative at its core is about growing opportunity for our residents. Our recently completed housing study gives us a strategy that guides to two goals that council identified, strengthening neighborhoods throughout our city and deconcentrating poverty. This evening, we're focusing on deconcentrating clusters of poverty. The work of the Poverty Commission and the Resilience Office will continue to play an important role in this process. This city council has made it clear that the status quo of concentrated poverty in Norfolk is no longer acceptable. For weaker neighborhoods that are on the rise, where there is strong leadership, good housing stock, there are different strategies in our toolbox to begin strengthening those neighborhoods. We want to raise median income and household values in those neighborhoods, and we'll do this through Gem Lot work, through housing incentives, and enhancing strong leadership in those neighborhoods. But in our public housing neighborhoods, the housing study tells us that we need a total transformation, and that strategy is a Purpose Built Community Model, creating neighborhoods of choice by improving housing stock, improving educational systems, and improving community services, community supportive services. So our comprehensive approach to deconcentrating poverty has three initiatives. We will improve choice through improvements to public housing communities. That means 1,700 units of public housing will be redeveloped over the next decade. It means enhancing physical and social environment there, and it means that no involuntary displacement of residents outside of the community will take place. Strengthening neighborhoods citywide, meaning providing choice to residents in neighborhoods of opportunity nationally, regionally, and locally. It means a commitment to not re-concentrate families into neighborhoods of poverty. And it means facilitating the development of quality, affordable, and accountable rental units throughout the city. Increasing capacity to take advantage of housing choice means developing collaborative models with human services agencies or community quarterback to ensure current and future residents have the capacity to succeed with housing choice. So, let's talk about the planning efforts that have taken place this far. Candidly, I would say to you tonight, we've got more questions than answers, and that's okay. I spoke to one city official about this project who said, "You know, we don't bring things to council that are this conceptual." And I'd say in this case, we have to come to council and the public at this conceptual phase. If we come with a fully baked plan, we will never get community buy-in. There is skepticism and a level of mistrust in the community which we must acknowledge. We must work through that by bringing stakeholders into the discussion and the creation of the strategy as we move forward. So looking at the previous planning efforts, you can see a lot of work's been done. We had the Goody Clancy proposal that came through several years ago, the Dutch Dialogues that we'll talk about in a moment. And so part of what the process we're going through right now is really analyzing those previous plans, starting to identify some consensus around those plans, at least at a staff level, and then combining what we think at this point are the best elements of each of those plans and beginning to draft a phasing strategy. Just to remind you of where we've been, the St. Paul's Area Plan, again, was developed by Goody Clancy, John, 10-plus years, 10-ish years ago. And really, at that point, you were proposing a mixed-income, mixed-use community with diverse building types and a connection to downtown. Mr. Riddick said it earlier, and he's reminded us, at least in the eight months that I've been here, and it really didn't occur to me until then, what a divining line St. Paul's Boulevard is and has been to the community, particularly for the African-American community. And so this connection to downtown for this neighborhood is really important. The Goody Clancy Plan began to build in some open space and to manage water, but it did not consider the full effects of the watershed and how that affects the entire area. Churches were a big part of the planning process and were viewed as landmarks in the community. But the site design was flawed and called for one-for-one replacement, meaning 1,800 units of housing coming back on just the Tidewater site. And what we're learning is that physically, that was impossible, or is impossible, and especially as we learn more about managing water. So then you'll recall the Dutch Dialogue conversations that came in relative to the National Disaster Resilience Competition. And although it's not a land use plan, this planning process focused more on connectivity and water management as well as economic vitality, looking through that resilience lens. It also expanded the area to the larger system of all three public housing communities, Tidewater, Calvert, and Young, in order to deal with water. So, applying land use from those previous plans. Look at the land use pattern of the St. Paul's Quadrant on the left. On the right, that is overlaid with the NDRC Dutch Dialogues Plan. So on the right, what you're starting to see is the elements that we think could be incorporated into a long-term plan. And it includes Church Street restored as a traditional shopping street lined with mixed buildings and commercial uses on the ground floor and residential uses above. In this picture, you start to see, in my mind, what an important intersection Church and Brambleton will become over time and what a focal point. It includes high-density mixed-use buildings in the blocks between Church and St. Paul's Boulevard, which makes an effective transition between downtown and the residential areas to the east. And you'll see on the right side, the large blue and green spaces along Tidewater Drive, which is really where you've got to manage the flooding that is taking place in such a dramatic way today. So we'll talk about that flooding for a moment. At times, you all know, most of Calvert and Tidewater are underwater. We begin to see that it's important to improve these areas that flood, but that most of those areas will not be developable land and will need to be used to manage water. Newton's Creek gives us a unique opportunity, and this is maybe the most important thing I'll say tonight, Newton's Creek gives us a unique opportunity to test our resilient strategy. If we have to redesign the community to manage water, how can we do it in a way that also deconcentrates poverty and provides economic opportunity for the citizens? So then we start talking about phasing, and I'm gonna ask John to jump up and talk for a moment, because I think it's important to hear how this plays out in the work of the Housing Authority. But if you look at the orange blocks, they're the things that would actually develop first. The blue sections are what would develop second, and the green would develop last. And what it really gives us is a lot of flexibility, and a lot of flexibility that we lose because of the developer properties that are taken away from flooding. So John, if you don't mind.
Sure. Good afternoon. This is Tidewater Gardens on the bottom, it's Calvert Square on the right, and Young Terrace on the left. As you can see, probably in the cooperation agreement and throughout this process, also endorsed by our board, is one of our guiding principles is to provide as much housing choice to the residents of these communities as we possibly can. And that includes the choice to stay until there's new housing for them, there's the choice to move to another community, or to take a voucher and move into private housing throughout Norfolk and throughout the region. What we're trying to do with our sequencing is to give the best chance of that choice not resulting in the need for displacement. But as you see here, and if you go back a slide maybe, Mr. Smith, the flooding over here obviously is something that we're interested, and HUD is interested in alleviating in terms of demolition quickly, and then move back to the sequence if, or do you have a runaway finger there? One more, two more actually. So using that flood, or...
I'm playing, I'm playing check to it.
Good. So, at the pace of about 100 to 150 units a year of absorption, because for folks leaving the community, you know, one of our other guiding principles is we want to make sure we're strengthening communities, we're not negatively impacting communities, we're not re-concentrating poverty. So there is a rate of healthy absorption that is going to have to be determined, and we'll start with a projection, and we'll have to measure that year by year. But when you're talking about 100 to 150 units a year that will be vacated and cleared, being able to submit a demolition disposition application, which is what is necessary to submit to HUD on all three, will allow us to stop rehousing in all three. So what we'd like to propose is that we move ahead through a, and it's rather lengthy process, it's probably gonna take six to seven months to move through the process, to submit a demolition disposition application packet for all three communities, and identify the orange first, which would be flooding mostly in Tidewater and Calvert, but also identify parcels that would allow us to build as quickly as possible. Because I think one of the options of making that choice available to stay is to utilize land to build first. You see, the orange in the middle is really along Church Street, and it can be combined, hopefully with successful efforts to get the post office and also other city-owned property to provide land for development. So, when you see these phases, it's laid out this way, really with the biggest goal of providing the best opportunity to provide choices to the residents.
All right. One thing John touched on that I think is gonna be a really important part of this is absorption, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit in a moment. But we're talking about, you know, order of magnitude, over time, a billion dollars worth of development, and how much and how quickly can our community absorb that development? And having a mixed-use project as opposed to a single-use project allows you at times to be bringing on housing, and I think this is mostly a housing project, but also bringing on commercial and some retail uses concurrently. So the cooperation agreement that's before you, the purpose of the agreement is really to approve the redevelopment and to establish a general working agreement between the city and the authority to coordinate their activities in support of the development. Again, that'll come back before you on the 18th of July, but you have a draft in front of you. In terms of governance, all efforts by the city and the authority shall be governed by the plan and assisted by a new single-purpose entity. Part of what we're thinking here is, it's important that we have an organization that wakes up and thinks about this and only this project every single day, and that John or somebody on John's staff, or Susan, or somebody on our staff, you know, has a myriad of other things to do, and we need, this is big. And so we believe that we need a program manager that in all likelihood reports to the Executive Director of the Housing Authority and the city manager to manage the implementation of that plan. But I want you to be clear, and Mr. Pishko helped us incorporate this into the cooperation agreement, council stays in control throughout this process. There are certain points where you've got to make the decisions, and you've got to make the approvals, and that's as it should be. In addition to the approval of the cooperation agreement, it's anticipated that council and the authority's board of directors will approve the authorities incorporation of that single-purpose entity, and again, we'll bring that back to you on the 18th. So we'll wrap up to talk about the goals and then the timeline. Deconcentrate our goals, pretty straightforward, you've seen it before, deconcentrate poverty and develop high-quality, mixed-income, mixed-use communities of choice. To increase self-sufficiency, financial independence, and successful outcomes for disadvantaged families through the provision of suitable housing choices and capacity-building supportive services. And this last one is really important. Provide access to excellent educational opportunities in partnership with Norfolk Public Schools, local colleges and universities, and early childhood education institutions. Let me be clear, we will not be successful without the early and constant involvement of the Norfolk Public School System. And so we've obviously had conversations with Dr. Boone and others, but the education opportunities that you provide in this community are going to be critically important. So what do the next few months look like? Obviously, we're here tonight on the 27th, talking to you all about this agreement, it'll come back to you on the 18th. We've got a developer roundtable set up for later in the week, which is just bringing a group of local developers into a room to talk about what it is we're trying to accomplish, and frankly, brainstorm with them about a project of this scale, and what is it that they would be interested in, what would they need in terms of information to move something like this forward? Our assumption at this point is that there will be a master developer, somebody that does the horizontal development, the infrastructure and roads and whatnot. On the 29th, we've got a pastors' roundtable. The faith community is gonna be critical to the success of this project, and so we're meeting with them, and the folks from Purpose Built are actually coming in and talking about sort of the human side of this conversation. Because I'm gonna tell you, I said it earlier, if we treat this as merely a physical redevelopment project, we will not be successful. If we don't have their buy-in, we will not be successful. We'll start in mid-July with meetings of the tenant management councils. Late in the summer, we'd like to have a program manager selected. We've undertaken an absorption study, which will start to tell us what the market will bear in terms of products that we bring online, and we think we'll have that by the end of the summer. More community meetings in the early fall, and then look at a solicitation for a master developer as early as the end of September. So the development of the community quarterback that we've talked about with you all a few times, which is the nonprofit that would really drive the handling of the residents and the support of the residents, and the demolition disposition application that John talked about would be submitted in late fall or early winter. And that allows, as John said, allows the Housing Authority to stop rehousing in those three projects. allows the Housing Authority to stop rehousing in those three projects. So, with that said, I tell you that John and I are available for questions, and Dr. Susan Perry, who is also here as well.
All right, Mr. Riddick.
Yeah, yeah. Naturally, I'm suspect.
Sure.
I call it gentrification. Norfolk is not the first city in the country to realize that, you know, gentrification takes place. Now, I've met with Susan, and I've met with Greg Endros, and I've met with John Konak, and the city manager and I have spoken about this issue. And there are just so many things that are, so many moving parts. One of the things that I would like to remind the council of is that, I don't know how many years ago it was when we were talking St. Paul Boulevard Quadrant, they expanded the footprint to include Huntersville, Lindenwood, Hunter Square, Brambleton, Addicts East and Aggers West. And the concern at that time, and still remains to me, is that I don't want this to be a dumping ground for the public housing residents through Section 8, you know, programs and things of that nature. And you also have Brambleton in there. And what that does, it, you talk about deconcentrating poverty, but what you're doing, if this happens, you're complicating, you know, the poverty issue. So, that's one thing that we need to be concerned about. There's an imaginary line in Norfolk, in terms of St. Paul Boulevard. The west of St. Paul Boulevard is white Norfolk, east of St. Paul Boulevard is black Norfolk. For those of you who don't, you know, if you're offended, then you need to roll your sleeves up and change that, okay? Now, there are a lot of things that could be done. Let's just say, for instance, if we were really, really, and see, you're talking about $14 million worth of demolition, but you haven't said anything about replacing anything. You've got $14 million of government money for demolition, but you haven't committed any government money for replacing any of the housing. You're looking for developers to come in and do things of that nature. Now, if we really wanted to be fair and honest about this, able to defend some neighbors, if you take, let's say, for instance, if you take the Els Nada parking lot, which is right across the street from Tidewater Park, no difference at all, you take that lot and you build a nice senior facility. And see, one thing Norfolk has always done when it comes to your public housing community, you separated things as far as race is concerned. You can't do that. Tommy and I recognize the fact that there are just as many people from the white community who are suffering these same things that we're talking about as far as poverty is concerned that needs to be taken into consideration. So, let's just say, if we were really genuine, we take that Els Nada parking lot, and we build a nice senior facility, and we go around and we'd inventory, and we'd get low-income individuals from both races and put it there. If we were really serious about deconcentrating poverty, going down Monticello Avenue, starting at the Greyhound bus station, there are just so many pieces of property, old HRT property, that we could do some things with. But we can't just concentrate these individuals that we want to gentrify into this, into the same area. One of the things that I think that the Housing Authority needs to look at, if we want to be successful, and this happened before, escrowing the rents of some of these individuals, so that when they move, someone would be able to buy homes and things of that nature. And it's just, it's just, just right now, it's just too many moving parts. You know, we have this group here talking about it, and then you probably have another plateau of individuals talking about it. And while we sit here and talk about this particular document that you want the city council to approve, I strongly believe there's an invisible hand. We've been talking about this for 17 years, and so somehow, this invisible hand is saying, okay, guys, this is, you know, the time to do it. The land that, where Mike Arthur Center sits, laid vacant for 17 years before anybody, you know, decided to do something with it. And so, let me say a couple of other things, too. There are probably not five cities in this country that have been as successful with urban renewal as Norfolk. We have a great track record when it comes to urban renewal, and something to be proud of. But when we go through this effort, we cannot make the urban renewal built on the backs of individuals who can't fight for themselves, you know? And I represent every public housing community in this city, every one of them, so does Angela. And I'm not ashamed to roll my sleeves up and fight for these public housing residents. I've been in this town all my life, and there's nothing you can tell me about Norfolk, there's nothing you can tell me about the annex of Norfolk, absolutely nothing. And so, when I come to you with the passion that you have for me, it's because I know how tricky Norfolk can be. And I say that if anybody in this room is offended, I'm sorry, but I know what it is. I've seen houses, I remember when they, when they did GIN, which was successful. I'm glad we have GIN, I'm so glad we have it. And the housing authority and the city told everybody, said, "You can come back," but they didn't put the comment there and say, "If you have $350,000." You know? I'm proud of East Beach, you know, I fought. That when I first became a member of council, and we went down to Ocean View and got rid of those shanties and some other types of homes to build East Beach, I'm proud of East Beach, you know? That's what we need. So, if we're going to be proud of this, you know, we have to make sure that there are no scars or wounds or any bad epitaphs about Norfolk because of the communities that we are, we are going into. We can go into this, we can look back and be proud of it, but you have to look at the fact that this is, I guess, almost 100%, you might have one or two white residents live there, we have 100% of residents in there who are African-American. And they are, those individuals I spoke about earlier, Ray, Susan, and Doug, they're just two or three different components that we need to work through as a council as far as this is concerned. We need to take an inventory and find out who lives there. Let's take Tidewater Park, for example. We need to find out how many, how many seniors live there. And you'd be surprised at the anxiety over the last 15 years that these seniors have had because they didn't know when the bulldozer are coming, you know? Then you have to look at the children that live there. There was an article in the pilot that there are more children living Tidewater Park than adults. Then you've got those persons who are close to being homeowners. So, this can be done, it can be successful. I'm glad that I've had two planning commissioners on the team with us, and this council, this cares, this council cares, and I believe that I can appeal to the conscience of this council to make sure it's done right. But it's the bureaucrats that I'm worried about. I'm worried about the fact that the executive director and the assistant director, the city manager and head of the Housing Authority, I'm concerned about that. You know, that causes me some heartburn. So, somehow, we have to put some stopgaps in, so the board would have oversight over you and say something here about you guys having all the decision-making, but that can't be it, because I'm concerned about you two bureaucrats that would be sitting back governing the lives of thousands of people. So, I really could, you know, say more, and I will say more later on, but this is very, very important. It's very important. When I, I remember Norfolk, believe it or not, you probably know this, this is the first city in the whole country to resegregate its schools district, and they had to take a second thought about it. This is the first country, it's the first city in the whole country to turn its back on Brown versus Board釋ation, and they didn't think a second about it. So, just like Norfolk did that, they could do the same thing here, and displace all of these individuals and scatter them all over this area and not have a second thought about it, if we let. So, all I can say is that in '18, don't reelect me, because you've got a fight on your hands, you know? A fight on your hands, that's it.
Mr. Riddick, my one comment would be, as you read this, we have, Bernard really held our feet to the fire to try and keep you all at the, as the key decision-makers of the right point. So, if the document doesn't read that way, then we need to change it.
Okay, I'm going to go through it again, because you're right.
Mr. Thomas to Mr. Spiegel.
Thank you. We've had some conversations about this, and I think I've told you this, but I think that getting rid of 1,700 units of public housing, concentrated poverty, that is proven itself to be an object failure, for the most part, will be our legacy. As we hand off the baton of leadership of this city to the next generation, this has got to be something that we're proud of. In and of itself, we say, we're going to get rid of the concentration of poverty. That's easy to say, easy to be proud of, but I will agree, in part with Mr. Riddick, it's going to come down to how it's implemented. And so, we've got to be able to have trust, the citizens have got to be able to have trust that this is going to be implemented correctly. But I think we've all studied this enough, been involved with the St. Paul's Quadrant Plan, as you suggested, about 10 years ago now, to know that we've got some great ideas for that area. The Dutch Dialogues brought even some even better ideas, and it's time to deconcentrate poverty, give the people who live there an opportunity, and let's bring in a new day for the dirt that's there.
Mr. Spiegel.
My question about the term mixed income is used quite a bit in the slide. So, if you're still going to keep the same amount of units generally there, how much more density are you adding to that section in order to create a mixed-income community? Because if you're just returning back 1,700 units of the same income level, then what are you adding to that? And I forgot to ask that question in our meeting, just something that caught my mind, because then it just becomes a community that what it is, but just newer buildings and newer housing. But how are we changing that?
So, a couple of things, and John looks like he may have something to say. One, we don't have answers yet, right? So, part of where we are is really saying to the community, we're not coming up here with a, with a plan. We've taken the old plans, we've looked at what we think are good about them, but we're bringing it to you all in the community, saying, we're getting started. So, in terms of mixed income, I think part of what you have to do is create those neighborhoods that have a variety of people and a variety of incomes, that are, and that are families that, for example, all want to send their kids to that school regardless of how much money they make. And so, what that ends up looking like, we don't know yet.
And then, the only other thing I would caution on is the amount of commercial space, because if you look at Broad Creek, you see a lot of empty spaces. It never, and we have the same problem even down in East Beach with building, you know, putting a town center in with businesses, it just, you know, that concept is not there unless it's on the exterior where people like to drive by and park and get there. There is some walk-up, but just not as much, so I just, you know...
It's a little bit of what this absorption study will start to tell us, but you're exactly right. How much the market can absorb, we don't know that answer yet.
Right. Okay, Ms. Graves to Ms. McCullough.
I echo some of Mr. Riddick's sentiments, most of them. My concern does go back to the individuals that live in the public housing units. I think as well done as any project of this magnitude can be done, there's going to be some people who are still up in their sadness. But I believe that if we keep the well-being of the residents that are currently there at the forefront and making sure that everyone, and even if that means, you know, going and knocking door to door, if that means, so that they understand and know what is happening before it's happening, not telling them today and having it happen tomorrow. But if they understand what's going on, and the tenant management piece is important to get the buy-in from the residents, I just would, you know, I, I like the idea of not being able to rehouse folks, because that is a great start. When we start to talk about building, I just want to, you know, Tommy talked about density, and we're, was it Martin, with 1,700 units, so it sounds like we're looking to double the density in that area, because, I mean, otherwise, you're just taking 17 poor people out and putting 17, I mean, taking 1,700 poor people out and putting 1,700 poor people back in with no mixture of anything. So, that dilution of poverty is very, is very important. And I think downtown can probably handle the density, and it might help with some of the retail, because that's what it, retail feeds our people. But I think that's definitely something that we have to keep in mind, that the heart of the people that are there, and making sure that we are diluting the poverty number.
Can I just add one thing to that? I just, when I echo Doug's comment, that it's not baked yet, so, I mean, you know, we don't have the answers to that, but just currently, I mean, I want to remind, the pledge is that folks who want, folks who are in Tidewater, Young and Calvert now, or want to be there, want to stay there, want to move into new housing there, our pledge is, there will be housing for you there. Now, we don't think 1,700 units will be necessary to make that pledge. We think the number is more like 600, which means that the density for this project doesn't have to double in order to have a mixed-income community. But there's a challenge in that, you know, the difference, 1,100 families are, because our, our goal is to still provide as much rental assistance as we're providing right now to that number of families. But we think that pledge will result in the need for 600 units or thereabouts onsite. But that's really, as we're going into the project, we really have to look at the type of planning activities that will go on, and what type of housing.
What has historically been, is that, is your 600-unit number based on historical...
Based on Broad Creek experience, based on Moton Circle, it's actually well above what ends up folks returning. But in this case, we're not proposing that we displace folks first and then have folks return. We're proposing, because of the absorption ability, that we actually meet the pledge of letting folks stay in the community while the demolition and vacancy and redevelopment is occurring. So, I think that's going to move the number up, and I think 600 will be needed today. Historically, it's really been more like 25% that actually have come back, and that would be about 400.
And that's moving people away and then...
And then, you know, because once they move, you know, we contact folks and they say, no, we'd like to, we're already here, we don't want to move again.
Well, I also agree with Mr. Riddick in making sure that we take care of senior citizens, those seniors and disabled folks that are living in those years, and giving them their protected class. So, I believe we could give them first right of refusal, if you will, in terms of moving and preference also, so that if they want to stay and move, they're able to stay and move one time and be, and be done with it.
All right, Ms. McCullough.
Just two quick points. One, I'm really excited that we're looking at the issue of flooding there, because these are folks, kids who can't get to school because the sidewalks and the roads are flooded. Shout out to Mothers Up Front, who's been working on this issue. So, I, it's really critical, we can't just put a ban on what we have, we've got to do something. And number two, you didn't use the term purpose-built communities in the discussion. Are we still following that model, and what is that relationship with, so much of that is about communities?
Yeah, I actually talked about it quickly, but for example, yes, we are finding, and that's really the, the human side, and staying with the families, and one of the things, and it's frankly, it's them moving and staying with them and the entire family for years, not just for that, for that single year. So, they're actually coming to town Thursday, for the 29th, for the pastors' roundtable.
So, when we put information about this online, do we have links to the purpose-built community videos and all? Because that, that really helps to explain the model, because I think this is such an abstract, and I know it's still conceptual, but there's, there's success where this has happened, and it shows where they've come from and where they are now, and I think it would help people maybe be a little more comfortable with the concept.
That's great advice. All right, Dr....
No, I just want to piggyback off of what Andrew said, because that's a great idea, and also realistic timelines, because that didn't just happen overnight. I mean, it's great, and it's new, and it's shiny, and it's pretty right now, but it took 10, yeah, 10 years to, to, from idea to almost complete project. And so, I think we need to be very realistic with the timelines that we have when we work with people.
All right, Dr. Wibbly.
Just very quickly, certainly, what Mr. Riddick has said, as somebody that doesn't, didn't live here, he educated me so much since I've been on council about the mistakes that have been made in the past. The thing that I just think we have to keep in mind is what we're... The thing that I just think we have to keep in mind is what we're doing right now isn't working. It's crime, it's education, it's health, all of it is related to poverty, all of it is relating to housing. So to keep doing what we're doing isn't going to get us anywhere. The other thing is that for all of us, the one thing we've asked council, I mean, asked Doug and asked our administration to be, is to be bold. And I think this is bold. It's resilient, it's working with poverty that we had set up a commission to do, and for us to do all that work and then not carry through with a purposeful, very jury move, I think is doing us all a disservice. So I'm not disputing frankly, anything Mr. Riddick is saying. I'm just saying we need to keep that in mind while we're being bold.
Okay. Mr. Manager.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item. That's a great discussion and great feedback and lots more to come on that piece. I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Mike Goldsmith to come up, and Mike, I'm going to put a little pressure on you, another single hurts your feelings, but I'm asking you to do it pretty quick.
Well, I will talk very fast. Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. I'm sorry.
Fixed or not fixed?
Fixed, yeah. Everybody's getting paid, so we're good. No, thanks a lot. I will roll through this as quickly as I can. So presentation overview, we're going to talk about what originally the organization was trying to do with the project, the timeline that we had, a timeline for PeopleSoft, some of the backdrop, environment policy and scope of what was happening while we were trying to implement, some of the challenges that we knew about as we were going into it, some of the unforeseen challenges that were discovered as we got through the project, what we've done to mitigate, some of the ongoing work, and probably the most important part, what was learned as a result. Just to remind everybody what the project goals were. When the organization decided to implement PeopleSoft, the idea was to increase accountability in all facets of time and absence management, and trying to make sure that people were being accurately paid and that they were being held accountable for the hours being worked. We wanted to increase the active employee compensation, really standardize everything that was going on. As we, as you'll see later, as we got into the project, we found some things that were not being done the same way throughout the city in reference to pay. So we wanted to make sure that everybody was following the same playbook as the project was implemented. We had some manual processes we wanted to get rid of and automate the leave process. Just a bit of a timeline, 1995, PeopleSoft was implemented. By the time 2012 comes around, we have seven PeopleSoft modules in place. At that time, the organization decided to explore implementing absence management. In May 2015, a contract was awarded to a company as a rider to a Seattle contract. It was a $1.13 million scope of work. Major tasks were to configure, customize, write some interfaces, generate reports and data conversion. In other words, getting PeopleSoft to be more automated. In June 2016, the contract was amended to modify scope and the overall timeline. The idea was to add some additional interfaces for public safety as well as implement time clocks. 2016, we decided to stagger some starts to things, 2016, absence management went live. That went fairly well as we implemented that. And then in December 2016, time and labor is turned on, and that's where the problem starts to begin. Little bit of what was going on in the backdrop, you know, PeopleSoft, as you can see by the timeline, implemented in 1995. By the time we get 20 years down the road, through all kinds of decentralization processes, we've now got divisions doing all kinds of things with their payroll. Things are not being done the same throughout the city. So again, the idea was to pull all these under one umbrella and try to make sure that we were doing things in a way that was uniform and everybody was getting paid in a fair and equitable manner. One piece of this was the overtime lawsuit by the police department. In 2014, because there was an allegation that overtime could not be documented, our police officers ended up in a lawsuit, which we ended up settling for a fair amount of money. We also had, as we were going through this, we had some pushback. As you have any change effort in an organization, you get a little bit of pushback. Some of that pushback ended up with some decisions being made that added levels of complexity to the project, that as we go through it, were part of the problems that, part of the issue that caused us to have problems. All right, challenges, seen and unforeseen. Going into the project, it was known that there were going to be challenges that we had in trying to implement it. It's a big complicated project, and you can see from the slide some of the things that the organization knew it was going to get into. If you're going to go to paying for actual hours, you have to go to biweekly pay. If you don't do that, the paychecks are different every time you get paid, and that becomes a burden in and of itself on the employee. There were some cultural changes that needed to have happened. We were going to ask people to punch time clock. That had not happened in Norfolk before, and, you know, that was going to engender some training, issues that we had to educate people about what was going on. There were communication, we knew we had to over-communicate to make sure that people understood what was happening. Also, you know, with any project, you run into this idea of known unknowns. As the implementation takes place, there are things that are going to have to be adjusted as we move through. The unforeseen challenges, this is where, not unlike when you're trying to remodel your house, you tear down a wall and you think you're going to do one thing and you end up finding termites. So what we found was not a full understanding of how complicated the payroll system was. And without having mapped all that out, as we got into it, as the organization got into trying to implement this thing, there were levels of complexity in there that were not anticipated, that caused problems with the implementation. Lots of work schedule variation. As we said before, 20 years of PeopleSoft, we had over almost 400 different schedules in the city. And by having 400 different schedules, that means that that all had to be programmed into the system, which again added to a level of complexity. Integrating absence management, time and labor became to be an issue because they played off of one another, and as one had to be changed, the other one had to be changed, that made it a little bit more complicated. User experience, we really, organizationally, did not understand how difficult it was going to be for the users to be able to use the system. And one of the biggest pieces was when we turned the system on, it really wasn't ready to go yet, and we had no backup plan. There was no, organizationally, had not developed an adequate backup so that if it didn't go well, there was nothing to drop back to. And that became a big problem, as we all know, when we came through it. I will say that in 2016, before it was turned on, a risk assessment was done based on what was seen at that time, balancing risk, it was decided to turn it on. It felt like because we had employees who would change their pay schedules to biweekly, change some of their billing schedules to biweekly because we knew W-2s were coming, and you had to have the W-2s right, the risk was taken to go ahead and turn the system on and go live with it. And in retrospect, without the backup plan, that created obvious problems that we all know about. Despite all of that, I think it's important to point out that everybody got paid. Even with the issues that were hap, that happened, paychecks were issued, they weren't as accurate as they should have been. In some cases, we overpaid, in some cases we underpaid. Where we found the underpayments, we very quickly tried to correct that through either fixing it in the system so it came out with the regular Friday check, or by cutting what's called an off-cycle check to make sure that folks were made whole. And that leads into some of the, what we tried to do to mitigate it. Understanding what had been done and understanding that payroll is something that is unbelievably important to our employees, is something that we owe them, to make sure that we're accurate. A lot of things were done to try to mitigate these issues. We talked about the off-cycle checks. People literally worked around the clock to make sure that when we found discrepancies, that we got people paid. A lot of effort went into making sure that folks were made whole and that they did not suffer unduly because the system was not working. The other thing that happened was a hardship fund was established. So folks were able to go if they had not been paid correctly, and with very little paperwork to fill out, we basically extended them an interest-free loan that they could use in order to get them over the hump with the payroll system being done. Resources, we added city staff, we had city staff working lots and lots of hours. Part-time employees were brought in to help with audits and to help get things done, to work and make sure that the system got stable. We also asked our departments to do pay validation, which helped out tremendously. In other words, the department would take a look at their own pay to make sure that their employees were getting paid as correctly as possible, and when they found problems, it was brought to the payroll team, and the payroll team addressed each and every one of those problems. Policy, I think it's worth talking about policy. You know, one of the things that was discovered, and it goes back to the process mapping of this, I don't, people don't realize that every policy we've got, when it comes to payroll, has to be reduced to a line of code that goes into a piece of software that generates the check. So what we did when we started to look at this thing is we found policies that didn't exactly match up. So in, for example, we have a policy that says you get a day's worth of leave every month. Well, whose day is that? Is it a police department's day at 12 hours? Is it an employee like me day that is, you know, eight hours? So that all had to be, that all has to be reworked, and that's part of the process of working through this. Management-wise, there's some accountability issues that we're, that need to be worked through. We've gone to a different system. It's important that everybody is using the system as it was intended. We're working through that and educating our managers to make sure that they hold people accountable. We are ongoing with department-level leave and pay audits to make sure that we're getting all of that done. We are sending out proactive compliance messages. In other words, if we see that there are employees, as we run exception reports, and there are employees that don't look right with their pay, or employees that have missed punching in and out, our finance department is sending out those notifications to the supervisors so they can make those right before the pay cycle ends, and we can make sure we get people accurately pay. Some of the ongoing work that we are doing, we're working with the vendor right now for, to make sure the system gets stabilized. We're also talking about a follow-on contract to make sure that the system will continue to work, and if there's things that we continue to have to change, we can do that. This goes back to the contracting piece. As a rider, it did not give us the flexibility that we needed to continue to work the project. To fix that, a meeting was held with the city attorney's office to actually talk about how we might differently contract for big, complex projects like this, to make sure that we're contracting in such a way that allows us the flexibility that when we do encounter problems, we can make it work. Okay, so this is really where we're at, what we learned. You've got to map the system before we start anything that's complicated, make sure that we've got the appropriate capacity for our project team, got to have somebody that's outside the project doing the management piece. You can see from the slide all the stuff that we, that we're going to make sure, where this doesn't happen again. A lot of people worked really hard to get the system stabilized, and I think it's important that we don't lose sight of that, and that we thank them for all the effort they put in here, so.
All right, Ms. Graves, before you go, Mr. Manager, Ms. Graves, and Ms. McCullough, or Ms. Graves?
You said that the payroll and getting folks their checks was unbelievably important. I would go with vital and critical.
Absolutely.
You know? The other issue that I have is that when we do these kinds of new system changes and things like that, and I guess there was, I'm assuming there was an RFP or something or another, did we check the references of anybody else that had ever used this system before to find out what they had as issues, or if they absolutely hated it and would never use it again, if they had a choice? Did we do any of that? I mean, do we do that?
We certainly do. Keep in mind, this goes back, you saw the slide about how the years just goes back. So unfortunately, you know, Mike and I work more here. So a lot of the issue is the complexity of what was already in place and how it had been changed over the years. And so even if somebody told you, "This is a great program and it works extremely well," their situation would be different from ours, I guess is part of the lesson that we've learned here.
And then the last question is on when you talked about days of leave versus hours. Doesn't there leave, isn't there leave time based on hours, based on years of service? It's in terms of hours based on years of service?
It is given in hours based on years of service, with the exception of something like sick leave that stays constant, no matter how many years you're here. The problem is the policy states a day of leave.
Okay.
And it really needs to be defined by number of hours that we're going to give.
Eight or up to five years.
Yes.
And so forth and so on. Okay, okay.
All right, it's Thomas.
You're still working on this?
Yes, sir.
One of the concerns I still have is we've added administrative work to managers that didn't exist before. And so I guess the question that I don't need you to answer to me, but as you continue to work through it, is, is it necessary in all instances and all departments to create that extra work? Or maybe for some circumstances it's not. So maybe if you continue to go through and look at that and say, is it really worthwhile to add X amount of hours with the work for this manager? Are the particular employees working under him, did we have a problem with them before or not?
We'll continue to look at all of that as we, as we get the system stable and look to improve it. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just thank you for getting it, working to get it straight.
Mr. Team Member.
All right, so Ms. Graves raised this earlier, and the mayor and I talked earlier in the week, or maybe it was ended last week, and just about everyone of you all has mentioned this, and there is nothing more important that we, in terms of a contract that we have with the employees than paying them accurately. And we have not honored that for a variety of reasons. And I believe it is the wish of this, or the desire of this council to acknowledge that, but to acknowledge it in a way that's somewhat meaningful, which we've got on July 3rd falling before July 4th. And it's my understanding the council would like to give the employees July 3rd off and make that a four-day holiday.
Thank you.
I say it's a little for stealing that.
You know, I always...
It wasn't as exciting, sorry.
I like giving it away.
That's great. Let's hear it for July 3rd employees.
The school system did it last week.
And Bernard, I think, is going to help us figure out. All right, with that said, we are going to move quickly, and Main Hotel and the Exchange Conference Center opened up this spring. Bruce Thompson is in the audience with us and want to acknowledge his presence. Jared Chalk is going to stand up and work with Greg Patrick to do a couple of things. One, Jared's going to talk about the project and really what we've seen, really some of the early, really early impacts that are exciting, and it has been a, just exactly what we all hoped it would be, a transformational project for downtown. And then Greg Patrick's going to jump up and actually walk you through the final, what are virtually the final numbers. We've got some punch list items to go through, but I just want you all in the community to understand what the final costs have been, which fall right in line with what we expected them to be.
All right, so I'm going to run through this quick, and then I'll hand over to Greg, who's going to run through the financial side. So we're going to give you a status of the hotel, conference center, parking garage, and the first two to three months of some of the market studies and the impact that we've seen. I think everybody knows the history. You know, this project goes back to 2005, two prior developers, and then in 2013, we entered into an agreement with Gold Key, and we recently opened at the end of March with a grand opening celebration. And we're still working on final punch list items in the parking garage and, you know, a few things in the conference center, but it's substantially complete. So the main and the exchange, so 50,000 square feet of conference space, there's 39 meeting rooms, the largest conference space in Norfolk, and the largest ballroom in Virginia at a little over 18,000 square feet. 300 key hotel, 11 luxury suites, presidential suite, 358 parking spaces, three full-service restaurants, the rooftop Beer Garden Grain, Varia, second level Italian, and the first level is Saltine Seafood. And then there's also a, another not full-service restaurant that is like a coffee shop. Next slide. Opened March 30th, great event, governor came to town. The Arts Weekend raised $581,000 for the arts, had the Virginia Symphony headline an event, it's a great event, huge success. That same weekend, on Sunday, 650 children from Norfolk who benefit from some local charity organizations were invited to come down, they toured through the hotel, and then they got to see the Cirque production for... They toured through the hotel and then they got to see the Cirque production for free that afternoon. So quickly, the economic impact that we've seen, and we're really, you know, three months into this, so, you know, there's been an uptick. But since the Main has opened, there's been 7,159 additional room nights in the comp set. The comp set is basically the Sheraton, the Marriott, the Renaissance, and hotels that compete locally with the Main. There's 118,000 group nights that have been confirmed or in negotiations to stay at the Main. 76% of these are new to Norfolk or, or five years prior. So they, you know, may have been here 10 years ago, but they left the market and now they're back. Here's a list of some of the notable groups. With the Main now open, the market in April 17 compared to April 16 grew 6%. So that's 25, over 2,500 additional room nights in Norfolk. And that's not just the Main, but other hotels. In May, 10.7% of an increase. The comp set, the average daily rate, the ADR, is up 2.3 points. So we're having more people come and it's driving demand for rates to be increased. So some of the key takeaways, you know, we're only two to three months into this. So it's projecting upwards. So the Main is shown to be a market maker, not a market taker. It's not negatively impacting the comp set. It's driving additional tourism to downtown, it's diversifying, you know, the downtown economy. And it's sort of validating the decisions that were made in the early 2000s. It's validating the consultants' reports. So so far, things are looking, looking up. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Greg, who's going to run through the finances.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to speak with you today. My part of the presentation won't be quite as glamorous as what Jared just presented. We're going to talk about numbers and kind of review the cost of the, of the project. So this presentation will cover an overview and history of the construction project funding, a review of the conference center and parking garage construction costs, including budget-to-actual costs and other related costs, a review of the hotel grants, and then finally, a summary of the total public investment to date in the project. So first, a couple of key takeaways. The conference center and hotel grant expenses will be fully supported by the Public Amenities Fund. Parking garage costs will be supported by user fees generated from the parking system. Final inspection of the facility is underway. Any additional costs that result from the inspections are not included in the presentation. And then finally, keep in mind that the construction project budget did not have any contingency. This slide outlines the capital funds appropriated for the project. This project was initially funded in the fiscal year 2005 CIP, so that's 13 years ago. Funding was provided each year in the CIP from fiscal year 2005 through fiscal year 2008. A total of about 88 million was appropriated for the construction of the conference center and parking garage. Over the last 13 years, multiple iterations of the project were contemplated with numerous renderings and developers attached to it prior to the city partnering with Gold Key. By the time the city and Gold Key signed the master development agreement in 2013, more than 16 million had been spent on site prep. These costs included land acquisition, demolition, architect and engineer fees, stormwater improvements. And what this left was a little bit more than 72 million available for the construction project when the MDA was signed with Gold Key PHR.
MDA did the master development?
Yes. All right. The first table in this slide is the budget and projected actual expenses for the conference center and parking garage construction project. The project budget was 72,113,000 dollars and the projected actual cost is 17,143,000 dollars. This puts us over budget by about $30,000. However, the projected actual cost is still less than the amount council appropriated for the construction project. The roughly, the second table in this slide details other expenses related to the project. So you have roughly 2.4, 4.2 million in related site work. This includes work outside the footprint of the building such as sidewalks, curb and gutter, entry-exit aprons, lighting, landscaping, streetscapes, some major utility infrastructure work, street work, paving and crosswalks. These expenses are more similar to the, to the pre-development work detailed in the, in the previous slide than the construction project, project itself. However, since the expenses occurred after we signed the master development agreement, they're outlined in this section. Also included in the table are costs related to conference center equipment and technology. These city assets were originally planned for purchase through our equipment purchase program. The technology expenses include audio/video infrastructure, projector, projectors, projection screens, background music systems, security cameras, high-speed internet infrastructure, and digital signage. Next, we have the hotel grants. So the 2013 MDA outlined hotel grants to the developer, including a $7.5 million grant to reduce construction costs. This grant was used to pay the first $7.5 million of hard construction costs for the hotel. It's worth noting that this grant was actually first authorized in the fiscal year 2007 MDA with a previous developer. Also, there was a $2.5 million grant for, to pay for construction costs that would otherwise have been allocated to the hotel. So these grants were designed to induce the development of a hotel of a quality comparable to the conference center. Please note that while the intent of the, the presentation is to outline public investment in the project to date, the city is also committed to performance-based grants as part of the 2013 MDA. These grants are tied to the performance of the hotel. The project qualified for the Commonwealth's Tourism Development Finance Program, or TDFP, because the state determined the Main would, would support tourism. The TDFP program leverages state and city sales tax receipts generated by the hotel along with a matching contribution from the developer to support a portion of the hotel financing package. The city's total contribution is projected to be 2.4 million dollars plus any interest that accrues on the financing. This grant will be paid over several years. The city also committed to a performance-based grant totaling a maximum of $750,000 over 10 years.
How much, several years? You're a budget guy, several is not generally a budget term.
Several weeks, so the repayment's going to be based on how well the project performs. So the more money the, the hotel generates, the quicker it will be repaid.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
So finally, this slide outlines the total public investment in the, in the project. Pre-development costs of 16 million, construction costs of 72 million, other costs of 7 million and the hotel grant cost of 10 million, combined for a total project cost of just over 105 million. Keep in mind, this doesn't include the performance-based grants because this is just cost to date.
Greg, thank you. Mr. Manager.
All right, so Mayor, just wanted you to.
Mr. Smigel has a question.
Oh, you weren't getting away that easy. Just two questions. I'm under the impression that parking, the decision to reduce the amount of parking spots was a bad decision on this because there was originally, for those that were on council, it was originally supposed to be a much larger parking garage and they came back and scaled it down. And I'm hearing that there's major parking issues mainly because the employees had nowhere to park and they, I think that's being worked out or it's been worked out, but that there's still just no place to park and that the Town Point Park Garage is now completely at capacity and very hard to find parking spots there as well.
So whether.
I never knew we, by the way, I never thought we'd ever have parking issues in the city of Norfolk because when I started on council, the parking situation was.
Dire.
Dire, as far as we had too many spots, so, yeah.
So I think, I think, I think you hit it. So parking is a challenge between here and the Main, really between here and Norfolk. And what's happened is we've got virtually 3,000 new people between here and there, between what's happening at the Main, John and his folks moving into the PNC building, some growth at Norfolk Southern, obviously ADP put a lot of, in a great way, put a lot of pressure on us. So, yeah, we've, we've got a parking challenge and Winter and Bart New and his crowd are really trying to think through the logistics of how we shuffle that stuff around. So we'll, we'll come back to you with probably some recommendations on how to resolve that, but it's, we do have a parking problem.
Build a new parking garage, I'm going to just wrap it up. And the second thing is that because of the amount of money that the city of Norfolk invested in this, I hope that things like the school system, the city of Norfolk are not being charged any fees when they use the conference. I mean, they have to buy food and stuff, but there should be an opportunity to use this conference center on some gifting. I don't know if that was worked into the contract, but.
I'll be surprised if it was.
I mean, if there are, if it's used on days that are not, you know, being used obviously for conferences that are bringing, bringing in revenue, but I, I think there's an opportunity, you know, for that or somebody wanted to use, you know, the, what's the room of excellency for Paul Frame? That room, you know, is a, to do a conference or something that they, there's either dramatically reduced fee or even if the housing authority wanted to do something there, that there should be opportunities to take advantage of that with the amount of money that was spent on this, the conference center side.
I'll look, I'll look in and see what was set up. All right, Mr. Thomas.
Couple of things with regard to the parking garage. A few years back, we added cameras to most, I think all of the public parking garages downtown, added signs saying the cameras are in the garages and that reduced the number of vehicle break-ins. My understanding, I asked the question, my understanding is that we are going to be adding cameras to this garage?
It's my understanding, what just dawned in his head.
Good, good, good. Right now, tonight, there's a sign out in front of the garage that says hotel parking only, that this is a public garage.
Yeah, and part of, again, we're, we're working through the logistics. It's just what Councilman Smigel said, we, we don't have enough parking to handle what we've got. And so some of the logistics of how we're shuffling people in and out of the hotel. So, so I've made the, can lead the decision that, that the Main will control that garage right now until we can get it figured out. And we'll get it figured out, Bernard's helping us, we'll get it figured out, we think, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Last thing is that there's a monument sign out there advertising the garage for the Main. It doesn't say the city of Norfolk anywhere on it. I'll piggyback on Tommy, we paid a lot of money for it. It should be, I mean, if it ends up being public parking, it needs to say city of Norfolk, public parking in some way.
All right, thank you.
But isn't that garage, is that a paid-up park garage? Is it a paid-up park garage? Okay.
All right, Ms. McClellan.
Related for a future date, are we going to have a presentation on parking sometime soon?
We will, probably after your recess.
Okay. Because I think, you know, this is a pinch point, obviously.
It is.
And how do we use technology? How do we guide people to where there's available parking? Because whenever I go to the Main, I don't, I park at the Town Point Garage. I don't even.
Don't bother.
Don't bother. It's fine, it's easy. It does, it's not a problem to do it, so, anyway.
Make that happen. Thank you, thank you very much.
I would like, I tell you, if, if you've been anywhere within sight of the Main, you have seen Mr. Thompson. I think he is 24 hours a day in that building. He's not a more passionate advocate for downtown right now and despite some of the parking logistics and all that kind of thing, the, the transformational impact of this project is real.
Bruce, did you want to say good evening or anything before we move on?
I would like to tell you all, thank you very much for the opportunity. It's been one of the most gratifying and enjoyable projects that I've ever had the chance to work on. And with all the great things that I thought might come out of this, it's even surpassed my expectations. I mean, the market acceptance, the way the community in downtown, the folks who work there day in and day out have embraced us, the way that beyond the doors, and we are widely known throughout the mid-Atlantic now as the premier destination. I look for bigger and better things and, and truly from the bottom of my heart, I thank the city of Norfolk for allowing me to be part of the project.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
I think Bernard's got a closed item. We're going to try and get that in.
Mr. Clerk.
The members of the council assembled informally in a closing meeting between 2017 and 2019 at 6:49 PM on the 10th floor conference room in the City Hall Building, as due to the purposes which set out in Clause 7 and 29 of subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended. Clause 7, the consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such briefing in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating cost to the public body involved in the Norfolk foreclaim. Clause 29, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds pertaining to the LBD's term for the turn development. Ms. Graves.
Hi.
Ms. John, oh, she's, Ms. McClellan.
Hi.
Mr. Riddick. Mr. Smigel. Mr. Thomas.
He said I for the hall.
Dr. Whibley.
Hi.